Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's time to start. And first, we'll start with the prayer. And Pastor Ben Porter of the Gateway Church is here. If you'd all rise.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, for having me. I first apologize. This is my first time being at the city council meeting. This is a great city. I'm so excited to be back in town and start our church. So from what it seems and what I've learned and heard, you guys are doing an awesome job. So this won't be my last time. So let's pray. Father, thank you for this great council. Thank you for this great city. We thank you for what you're doing in the lives of the people in this city and what you're doing for the people in this city as a result of the decisions made in this board. We need your presence. We need your counsel. We need your urgent input for such decisions that are being made in this great council, Father God. Just lift up every board member. We lift up every person that's here today. We thank you, Lord God, for having our best interest at heart. And we ask that you be with us, Father, as we continue to look to your will for what should be done in this great city that we love. Have your way today, this hour. That your will be done, that your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven. And we give you honor and glory for it. In Jesus' name, everybody say it.
Amen. Thank you. If you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and be seated. This is a study session, and no action will be taken during the study section. But we do have business to conduct. First, normally, we'd have a presentation for the beautiful business property of the month. However, the owner can't be here. So Julie, if you'd come up and say a few words about our business property of the month, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The city of Cape County is recognizing Buffalo Wild Wings as their beautiful property of the month. Sometimes we don't get out to Seamer Drive area, but when our committee went out there and they recognized, they really went above and beyond in their new store location. The test use landscaping, and that helped them with their design. And so we just have a recommendation on Buffalo Wild Wings this month as a beautiful visit.
Good. Thank you. Counsel, do you have any communications or reports?
We always, well, I was talking this the weekend, and I wanted to... I was thinking about this as the news over Friday, and I couldn't help but think about our people who work day in and day out for our city. And I just wanted to send heartfelt condolences to Virginia Beach. That's a tragic event, and I send all of our prayers to them. So I wanted to say that.
Anybody else on the council? If not, I have a few words. The Salt Memorial for fallen law enforcement officers was last week. It was a record crowd of 349 people attended. It was a good showing of the families of the fallen officers. We're talking about 49 police officers who have lost their lives in southeast Missouri over the course of many years. But I encourage you, if you haven't made one of these, next year, we'll have another. So it was well done, and families always appreciate it. So that's all I have on that. And I'd also like to thank, I've been keeping abreast of the river crest and so forth. And we had that little incident with extra water downtown. But I will say, Public Works is on top of everything. They're doing a yeoman's job down there and keeping the water away from us. And I'd like to thank Public Works, as we do frequently, for things they're doing, Stan. If you'd tell the rest of the crews that we appreciate them. Keep that water on the other side. Also, I noticed we have a couple of former council members in the audience. John Voss, he's been here in the past. And Danny Estner's here. So good to see you, too. And did I miss any that are hiding out there? Nope, okay. All right, staff. Just wanted to second what you said about the flood. Certainly, it's been in excess of 80 straight days, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, where the pump stations have been manned. So that's a lot of fatigue. And in 25 minutes, it can turn upside down. And Stan was telling us today about how in just a few minutes, the pumps weren't running, the pumps went from not running to all six running at full speed and pumped it out. And in 28 more minutes, it was dry. Or it wasn't dry, but the possible flood was gone. You can't predict something like that. But if you're not ready, it can be tragic. And so just echo what the mayor already said, and Robbie had already said. It's the service, good service of your friends and neighbors who want to see what's best for our city that make a difference. So thank you for that. Now, we're predicting a crest of 46 feet. So we're up at 47. Now we're back down to 46 is the predicted crest. Lot's going to happen in the next three weeks. But certainly, we don't view these 80 days as stopping at 80, but more past triple digits now of continued use. And so we ask the citizens to continue to be patient. These are the same folks that mow our detention basins and do a lot of the other work that has to get put on hold. And so we're looking and appreciate the patience of the citizenry for that. Secondly, you will see this week a statewide emergency management drill called Shake of Fury. And it's basically an exercise where we pretend a significant earthquake has happened and go through drills so that we know what to do when and if the real thing happens. So you will see a lot of activity. And just need to know it's going to happen in our community throughout this week. And it's, for the good of our citizens, a flood, it seems like we've gotten a lot of practice with the flood. But a major earthquake, we haven't. But it's important to test our systems and to test our processes in order to make sure that we are prepared. So as you see those things happen this week, you'll probably see quite a few things tomorrow, by the way. Something to pay attention to. So I think that's the major things I had. Mayor? Thank you, sir. Next up for discussion is Marla Mills with the Old Town Cape update.
Counsel, thank you. Can you hear me? I'm a little short for the microphone. I want to first say thank you to the council and thank you to the city of Cape for partnering with Old Town Cape. Every year, we give you a report that kind of tells you what we've been up to over the past year. And so that's what we're here to do today. I have your, the report should be in your packets. But I'll highlight a few things and then answer any questions that you might have. We've tried to put this in a format that you can see, and I think it works well, but that you can see how the work that we do, our goals and our objectives really do align with the city goals and the goals that US Council has set out for the city. And so we've shown that in a way that makes the connections really easy for you. So if you have questions about that, let me know. But, and a lot of this comes from the 2018 year because that's how we kind of collect our statistics. But in 2018, I'll highlight that over $21 million was invested in downtown. And that's a very conservative estimate. We know that our numbers leave off some investment that we're not able to capture. But of that, in over 100,000, excuse me, 21 million of it was private investment. So that's a lot of private investment in our downtown. And of course, a lot of that was the hotel. But there was obviously other investment as well. So I'll just point that out. And then I'm not going to touch on every one of these. I know that you can read, and so I'm not going to bore you. But there are a couple of things I do want to highlight. As far as downtown improvements, we didn't mention Ivor Square and the work that's being done there. We're about to wrap that up. That was, just as a reminder, a result of a grant that Old Town Cape received through Partners in Preservation. It's a National Trust for Historic Preservation partnership with American Express. And so it was $127,000 grant that we were awarded thanks to the support of the community as voting partners. And the grant allowed us to refurbish the fountain, to redo the landscaping, to put a roof on the gazebo or the bandstand as it was built in the 1900s, reflective of the original, not exactly like the original, but reflective of the original roof. And then to help with doing some reader boards, which is also part of the statue project. And then because of that grant and the work we were doing and the renaming of Ivor Square, we were able to partner with a small group of people who were interested in placing a statue in kind of in memorial for United States Color troops contributions to the Civil War. And because the courthouse was renamed Ivor Square after an African-American family, it was an appropriate kind of telling the story through the statue. But then in addition, also including reader boards that tell the story of the Ivors family, of contextually, the other monuments that are at the park, and then, you know, about the statue itself. So we're real excited to say that that statue will be dedicated, turned over to the city on this Saturday. The service, if anyone can join us, the services are the dedication or the ceremony starts at 11:00. The whole afternoon, from about 10:00 to 3:00, will have all kinds of music and some other things that are included. But the ceremony itself will be at about 11:00 and will only last, won't last all afternoon, I promise. Will only last about 45 minutes. So if you can join us, that would be great for that dedication. And as we turn, are able to, we're the umbrella organization that then will turn that statue over to the city. I also want to point out that we're part of and have been since its inception, the Public Art Committee and the Outdoor Art Exhibit, which is now in its sixth year and gets a lot of attention along Broadway and not just in our community, but attention from, we get artists from all over the country that participate in that. And so it's a great awareness. Also, under kind of the beautification of downtown, we partner, and I'll point this out, we partner also, in addition to the city and other organizations, with the Downtown Community Improvement District. And it's a great partnership. And we believe that that partnership and that agreement kind of ensures coordination of services and that kind of thing because their goals are greatly aligned with ours. But under that, we provide some direct services. Like, we do part of the Christmas decorations, but the CID also helps with those. They help with downtown litter pickup, those sorts of things. So that's a great partnership. This year, not part of that partnership, but also kind of under the beautification of downtown, we were able to, our board, set aside some dollars for a grant, granting process, which is hard for us to do. Set aside those dollars. But we were able to provide six matching grants for six new awnings downtown, either replacement awnings or new ones. And so I think that's a great improvement. And then, lastly, we, I just wanted to point out that the organization and the partnership we have with the city, we believe helps you leverage kind of citizen input and citizen participation. We are a volunteer-driven organization. So we have at all levels, from our board to all of our committees and all of our events and activities include volunteers. So we believe it's a great way to leverage community involvement into the city and into the activities of the community. And that's kind of all I was going to highlight. I have extra reports if anyone needs one and can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions?
Is there something in the news today?
There was something in the news today. And I can speak to that if you'd like me to. I will be, I've been with the organization for almost 13 years and will be leaving the organization in this, from this position in, within the next couple of months. I'm working with our Board of Directors for transition, hiring a new director. And that's, I think, what you read in the papers today, Robbie. But I do want to assure you that we have a great board and we have great staff. And by the way, I do want to mention, we have, if you guys will wave or stand up, we have board members and staff here with us today. The peanut gallery back here. But we have great board and great staff. And the program is very sustainable and will continue to provide the great services I think we've provided over the last 20 years of the organization. So.
On behalf of the city council and the city itself, I'd like to thank you for your service over the 13 years, several years lately that I've been around doing this stuff. I've seen you at many events. And we've had many occasions that Old Town Cape has been involved in. So if any other council person wishes to address it, but on behalf of us, I'd really like to thank you for your service.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is the Planning and Zoning Commission Report. And I see the chairman's here, so whenever you're ready, sir.
I think we, I think we put it on primarily for you to come and listen.
Well, well.
Ryan Trimble, right?
No, I think really, as council is looking at marijuana issues, it's been really important. And one of the things that is really evident, I think, and a real desire of the entire council has been to move something along that we can indicate to folks what, you know, what's going to be the zoning and things that they're going to be under. So that timeline looks like, really, at your next Planning and Zoning Commission, we'd like to have you go and bring us a recommendation or bring this council a recommendation so that a hearing can be, can be set for the July 1st meeting. And a vote can happen in July 1st and then the 2nd and 3rd at the, at the 2nd July meeting. So really, in order to do that, we wanted to allow council tonight to discuss their ideas and concerns and for you to take back and begin that process. So teed that up. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Counsel, your thoughts on the matter? Who wants to go first? Or does anybody want to go first?
I'll jump in.
All right, Dan.
You know, in my opinion, I want to make sure that we are not keeping out a potential industry. I feel as though having the 1,000-foot buffer is going to be detrimental to some of the property owners in parts of the city that have higher density. Downtown, the CID, the Central Business District, those are the areas where, you know, historically, when those houses were built, those neighborhoods were created. They were surrounding a church or a school. A lot of that retail is excluded on that 1,000-foot buffer zone. And so for a business looking for a retail space that's not a large-scale space in a strip mall, maybe that's the price excludes some businesses, maybe the square footage excludes some businesses. I'd like to see us make an exception to these, or make a special buffer zone for these areas so that we can have these businesses in the Central Business District, the CID District.
Thank you. Robbie?
On that, with that, after our last meeting, I have reached out to 15 different business owners in downtown Cape. And I had talked to them and said, 1,000 feet is what it currently is. City council, we are discussing to it to match in the CBD, the liquor law, which I had said it was 300. Ryan corrected me, it's 200. And talked to each one of them. And everyone of them, 100%, these are people that live and work downtown, have kids. Every one of them told me that they agreed with allowing it at 300 feet in the CBD. One of the pieces that I like about that is that there is the opportunity for extra tax for the CID in that area. And to Dan's point, I mean, the, at 1,000 feet, it completely excludes it anywhere in downtown as well. And so those were, those were the pieces. I was surprised out of talking with those business owners that they would be in support the way they were. They thought it was kind of silly that one was being compared differently than alcohol. And that was a resounding piece. So that's where I am. We've looked at, I know, Ryan, thank you, Ryan. And Teresa, I know she's not here. But I know we were getting maps back and forth on that. And there's a lot of good information on the 1,500 and what it would look like in the CBD. I would add that on the CBD, with that overlay, there is still a lot of portion of Broadway that, and I had got clarification from Ryan Thursday, or Friday, there's still a lot of pieces on, in the Broadway corridor that would not be, that would not be allowable, even at the 200. Is that correct? So I still thought that there was still, I mean, when you really look at that map, there's still a lot of spots because of Trinity, Centenary.
Because we've got huge churches on Broadway.
Yeah.
There's a church on every block, pretty much, between Sprague and Spaniel.
The map here shows the properties that would be eligible if the distance requirement were 300 feet. Those are shown in orange. And then if it were reduced to 200 feet, the additional properties are shown in green.
Anybody on the council need further clarification from Ryan at this point? Anything else, Robbie?
Would other businesses be able to do it, even if you take it downtown?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Will other businesses, if they desire to do so, would they be able to do that if it's going to be only downtown? Or is that just for downtown only? Will other businesses, even though they're not downtown, be able to use the same 300?
Yeah, the way it's proposed...
The way I kind of proposed it was to say, we allow it to mirror alcohol in downtown Cape, and then it would remain 1,000 feet outside of the Central Business District. So it would be allowable, but per the, not that map, but per the 1,000-foot mark, it, you know, you're still got the Seamer's Drive and some of the spots along King's Highway with that 1,000-foot mark. Is that right? That's fair?
Anything else, Charlie?
Yeah, I just want to know, would that be fair? For other, why are you looking like that? For other business to think about it, if you put yourself in their shoes and they want to open up a business and the state says 1,000 and the city says 300, how could we justify that? And if somebody can give me, because this is something I've been chewing on for a minute.
Well, yeah, it's our decision.
Yeah, but I'm saying...
I think Dan's point was that the densities are higher in that area, the way it was built years ago. The densities were higher, therefore, it called for a...
Yeah, because back in the early 1900s, when a lot of the buildings and the housing stock were completed in the parts of the city closest to the river, that's when people walked to their school from their home and walked to their church. And so just because the density and the way of life was different in the early 1900s, I don't want that part of town to miss out on a potential business.
Oh, I'm all for not missing out, but I'm just saying, the other businesses in other areas, how could we explain this?
Well, I guess as you go further out, toward, further out west, the prevalence of churches and schools gets wider and wider, spread apart. And so the availability of that retail space is greater already, naturally, because of that 1,000-foot buffer zone from the state. And so kind of compensating, because of that 1,000-foot buffer zone, compensating for it and for the housing stock age with a special overlay zone in the Central Business District.
So a place like Plaza, which has no church in it.
Yeah, I think, I can't remember from that original map. If the Plaza...
Or Town Plaza?
Yeah. Or is that too close to the...
Yeah, it's shown there in the red. So if it were, if the state were 500 feet, Town Plaza would be included.
But if it's 1,000...
If it's 1,000, it would not.
It would not be. I mean, and I don't want to put word, but Dan, what you're kind of saying is that, I mean, because of the density and what was built in the 1900s, I mean, I could look at it and say it almost is unfair towards...
Business owners that own older buildings.
Right. Because they don't, they would instantly not have an opportunity to lease or sell a building in downtown. We're looking at you, Stacy. Okay, we'll make it four miles for Stacy.
Did you want Ryan to go first?
Ryan's like, no.
You know, I've sat back and listened to all these conversations. And I see all sides of it. And I've gone back and forth. And my initial thought was, let's just keep it at 1,000. And then I said, well, you know, then this proposal came up for the 200 in the CBD. And I said, well, I don't know. Maybe that has some merit, too. And now I'm back to, you know, could there be a compromise we make of 500? But then again, I know you're knocking out some of that CBD. So, you know, I don't know. I like the fact that you got a lot of input from the downtown businesses. I would like to hear, you know, I mentioned to Scott earlier, you know, I really want to hear a lot of public input. I'd like to see some public input at the P&amp;Z. I assume you're going to have a hearing. At our hearing here, I'd like to hear what the public has to say as well. But at this point, I am inclined to support including that CBD area. But it took me a while to get there.
Stacy?
Well, I, my opinion hasn't changed since we talked about it two weeks ago. And I don't think it will. A lot of people contact, well, a good handful of people contacted me just out of the blue after our last meeting and just said, thank you for, you know, wanting to maintain the 1,000-foot buffer. I think... I think in our town, we could probably find a very diverse, you know, opinion. So, yes, I agree. I think the public input part will be, will be, it's always important. I have a concern, I think, completely in opposite of yours regarding the downtown. I guess the proximity of houses to businesses, the closer proximity in downtown concerns me. Just, you know, you've got kids particularly living close to businesses and what impact that might have on, on kids, especially growing up with what eventually will be pot shops right around the corner. That's just kind of how I look at it.
I thought the same thing. But then I call in business owners who have kids and live downtown, and I was really surprised.
Well, I think you'll.
These are people that have business owners or have kids.
I, I know, and I think, I think we'll, we'll have a diverse response to the question, you know? This is probably going to be one of those things that, yeah.
Might be the next chickens.
Fifty-fifty, that's right. So, anyway, that, I still maintain the, I think, the thousand-foot. I don't see unfairness in it. My preference would be, you know, for the areas that only fit in that thousand-foot buffer. If somebody really wants or needs these products, they're going to drive an extra five minutes and get it. And so I don't think we're making it unduly hard for anyone by doing that.
Thank you. As a council member, I'd like to say that this issue was an initiative that was voted on by the state of Missouri. Slightly, it wouldn't have had as high a vote if the buffer zone had been smaller statewide. So 1,000 feet was what they agreed on, and that's what a majority of the voters who voted for it thought it would be. I'm personally against the initiative to begin with. There is money involved, taxes. Other communities have raised lots of money for their communities through the sale of marijuana, Colorado, State of Washington, State of Alaska. But I will say from personal experience, in the state of Washington, if you go downtown Seattle, you can't walk without finding a place like this, and the odor of marijuana is overwhelming. It's legal. Now, I'm not sure that's what we want to expose our riverboat cruisers to and the people that live in our downtown community. This is my opinion. The other thing is, I have found in my career that marijuana is a precursor to other drugs. And I can state that as a fact. And all you got to do is watch live TV or live PD any weekend, and you'll see it's all over the country that most of the stops start with marijuana. Now, I am not against, Council, medical marijuana, if it was prescribed by a doctor for a medical condition like it was a drug. I get a pill for an ailment. It's prescribed by a doctor, as will be this, and you'll, I go to a drugstore and buy it. It's regulated heavily, and we don't have to contend with the byproducts of the what happens beyond that. We have liquor. We have liquor stores. We've had liquor as long as it's been around. It's regulated. However, you tell me we don't have problems with adults who can legally buy alcohol, who then don't give it to someone who can't have. I see the same problem here, but I will abide by the wishes of the council. I'm certainly abiding by the wishes of the state of Missouri voters. But I wanted to give you my opinion that I am against the, making it any less than 1,000 feet, which is what the law requires at this time. If they amend it in the future, that's fine. But that's my position on it, and I thank the council for listening to me and thank the planning and zoning for being here to listen to our comments. Does anybody else on the council have any comment about this? Thank you, Ryan.
Ryan's like, okay, back to square one. So trying to interpret that and giving the staffs what I'm going to propose is that we will take the 1,000 feet and, and propose, have a proposed zoning at 1,000 feet with also a proposal of 200 feet at, in the CBD. And that will go to planning and zoning for them to discuss and make a recommendation based on what they hear from the public and what they've heard tonight, bring back to council then their recommendation.
Two separate?
Well, whatever their overall recommendation is, right?
I've got a draft amendment here.
So.
Set up for 300, but we can change it if we want.
So then that will come back with a recommendation. Then you will have a hearing, it's the first meeting in July, July 1st. And then at that point, council can amend that recommendation at that point and vote for it. And if it, if it passes that, and then it passes the second and third, then it will be complete by the end, I believe it was July 20. So does that seem fair to everybody that basically? And to the public, we really want the public to participate, to contact and be a part of the planning and zoning meeting, be a part of the public hearing that will be here July 1st. And.
We're talking about two separate. Two separate.
Yeah, they will consider two separate things, but they can also come up with their own.
They can come up with their own.
It will be one piece of legislation.
It will come as one.
Sorry?
We just said one recommendation.
There'll be one recommendation.
We've got it set up in the table, so you could have a standard for the CBD, the separate distance standard for the.
But then it will come here, and then you can amend it by vote of council. So that moves us ahead and gives direction, which is what we really needed tonight. And then it's an open process that we invite everyone to participate in. Let's split the baby.
Thanks, Glenn. Appreciate it. Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate you coming up.
All right. Is there anybody here who wishes to appear for anything that is not on the agenda tonight? And you have some time to speak to us about anything not on the agenda? Going once, John Fox.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Council.
Boy, chickens don't look so bad now. I currently have the opportunity to serve on the Cape Library Board of Trustees, and my term is expiring. I have reapplied to also be reappointed starting in July. I know it's not on tonight's agenda. I think it will come in the next meeting's agenda. I wanted to be here tonight and express my desire to continue to serve the city in that capacity and to see if you have any questions for me.
Apparently not.
Okay.
But we appreciate you coming.
Another vote of confidence to be able to serve for three more years. I am treasurer-elect starting July 1st and look forward to serving in that capacity as well. So thank you for what you do. I've been in your chair, and I know it's a tough job, but I do appreciate what you do for a great city. Thank you.
Aren't they also putting you to work on TTF?
I am, so I'm going to have the opportunity to serve in that committee as well.
Congratulations on your recent retirement, Ryan.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I'm enjoying it. I recommend it for.
Are you, are you busier now than you were?
I think I am.
Yes, you'll see that that, that happens.
It does. It's a good problem.
All right, sir.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else wishes to appear before the council? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address.
I'm with the Community Society of Southeast Missouri. So we met with Scott, and we wanted to just make ourselves available for any questions that you and I have after our meeting with Mr. Meyer.
Well, we have a public hearing on the budget tonight, so if you wish to address anything further busy on that, you can do it then.
I did share with council the agreement that includes not taking feral cats, and so that, they've been informed of that. Also, today, talked with the City of Jackson and the county, and they said they had to come to an agreement to kind of continue, at least this year, with the amount that they had last year and, and, but what have agreed to ongoing discussions to try to have the full understanding to go forward in next year's budget. So I think that's probably where we stand. And that seems to make sense rather than rushing to a decision and then getting us out of, out of sync with that. But certainly appreciate the conversations we've had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the council on items not on the agenda? In that case, we'll have the agenda review.
Council, we do have two public hearings tonight. The first one will be the public hearing to consider the proposed annual operating budget. Just, if you recall, we, back when we had our council retreat, we did go through the budget pretty thoroughly at that time. We talked about a lot of different issues. All those issues have remained in the budget. There have been a few small changes. As a reminder, and I know there's been some good reporting in the newspaper about it, you know, we do have some concerns going forward regarding our ability to meet reoccurring costs. And so we will be, after this budget's approved, we will immediately be working on a committee to look at everything on the table to begin to address that systematic problem in the future. But I also want to be clear to everyone that our current balance, our current budget is balanced, that we don't have a budget crisis on our hands, but rather than let it develop into a budget crisis, we want to begin working on it now. And so that's, that's part of your budget message and part of what we've called attention to. We did have a couple of changes. The CBB, we added a project within CBB to do some aquatic center marketing. So made that change since then. Also, we've added a few fees to the, the budget. There is a 2% raise that we noted back then for our employees. And utility rates would be adjusted by a total of 1.7% of the average bill. It's about 85 cents more for trash and 2% water increase and, and no, no increase in sewer. So that's kind of the highlights of that, but I wanted to go over them with you during this time. And then we'll hear what the public has to say during the hearing. Second public hearing is on property at 151 South Spanish. This is to go from R4 to CBD. This is where Eden Spa is, and this matches their current use. Then we have the consent agenda. You'll have, first of all, you have the appearances, and then we'll have the consent agenda. Items four through 13 are all the second and third readings from last time. They cover a variety of record plats and acceptance of improvements, of a special tax bill for demolition, of us asking for grant funding matching in our budget, as we've done in the budget, there are things we identified there. Temporary construction easements and, and sorts. So that's through item number 13. Then item 14 is the license indemnity agreement with Southeast Missouri State University for them to install some security cameras. And then 15 is accepting of payment of improvements on Bloomfield Road, and 16 is the improvements at Collins Mill, Phase 2 and 3. So those are the consent agenda items. Are there any of those items you wish to discuss further or to remove for further discussion?
Scott, I need to abstain from eight, 12, and 16 due to financial conflict.
Eight, 12, and 16. Other items. New ordinances. We have the first reading of the operating budget, followed by the first reading of the utility rates that I mentioned earlier. Number 18, number 19 will be the changing of the zoning for Eden Spa. Number 20 is the consolidated grant agreement. This is for the Simpo. We get a consolidated grant to fund that operation, which we run. And then 21 is accepting permanent easements on Highlands at the Hopper Crossing. And 22 is a permanent drainage easement on 2601 Hopper. This is for the new culverts going on in there. And then we have appointments for the Historic Preservation Commission, which I think you have gotten input on. And I believe that is it. We do not have close, any close session items tonight. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Before we move forward, I'd like to invite the council to the ribbon cutting at the Kappa Hop Park tonight at 7:00. Look forward to that. And moving on. We need to call ourselves to order for the regular meeting. Bruce?
Brian Essex.
Here.
Bob Fox is absent.
Bobby Card.
Here.
Victor Gunn.
Here.
Stacy Kinder. Shelley Moore. Dan Presson.
All right. I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Dan Presson?
Thanks.
Stacy Kinder. Anybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Adopted the agenda. All right. First up is a public hearing to consider the proposed annual operating budget for the City of Cape Girardeau for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019. Is there anybody here to speak to that public hearing? Public hearing for the annual operating budget. Going once. All right. And then we'll, we'll vote on that with the whole thing. Yeah. So then we have another public hearing to consider a request to rezone property at 151 South Spanish Street from R4, medium-density multifamily residential district, the CBD, the Central Business District. Is there anybody here to speak on that item? I'm not even going once. We're just gonna close that, close that one down. All right. Is anybody here to appear for items on the agenda tonight? Anybody here to appear for items on the agenda? And we'll close that one out. All right. Mr. City Attorney, would you do the consent agenda, please?
I will do, sir. Number 19-65, in order to accepting four permanent sanitary sewer easements for Deerfield Offsite from Dry Southwest Inc. in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Ordinance accepting four permanent sanitary sewer easements for Deerfield Offsite from Dry Southwest Inc. in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 19-75, in ordinance appropriating funds for certain grant-funded expenditures for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. An ordinance appropriating funds for certain grant-funded expenditures for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. Number 19-77, an ordinance authorizing issuance of special tax bill for properties located at 2827 and 2829 South Sprague Street for the demolition of dangerous buildings under the provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinances of the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing issuance of a special tax bill for properties located at 2827 and 2829 South Sprague Street for the demolition of dangerous buildings under the provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinances of the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 19-78, in ordinance spanning Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances of the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding fences. An ordinance spanning Chapter 25 of the Code of Ordinances of the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding fences. Number 19-80, an ordinance accepting a temporary construction easement from DLG LLC for 1,001 North Kings Highway for the Hopper Road Box Culvert Project in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting a temporary construction easement from DLG LLC for 1,001 North Kings Highway for the Hopper Road Box Culvert Project in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 19-81, an ordinance accepting a general warranty deed for property located at 1237 Rear North Water Street in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting a general warranty deed for property located at 1237 Rear North Water Street in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 19-82, an ordinance accepting a permanent drainage easement from DeJoy's of Shoney's Inc. at 2640 Hopper Road in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting a permanent drainage easement from DeJoy's of Shoney's Inc. at 2640 Hopper Road in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 19-83, an ordinance. Number 19-83, an ordinance proving the record plat of Jones-Dunkland subdivision, an ordinance proving the record plat of Jones-Dunkland subdivision. Number 19-84, an ordinance proving the record plat of Collins Mill subdivision, Phase Three, an ordinance proving the record plat of Collins Mill subdivision, Phase Three. Number 19-86, an ordinance accepting four permanent sanitary sewer and utility easement for Kensington Place, Phase One, from Drury Properties Inc. and Drury Southwest Inc. in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting four permanent sanitary sewer and utility easements for Kensington Place, Phase One, from Drury Properties Inc. and Drury Southwest Inc. in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 19-893, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a license and indemnity agreement with Southeast Missouri State University for installation of conduit for security cameras along 350 North Anderson Avenue in the state of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to move the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Robbie, seconded by Shelley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New ordinances. Bill number 1987, an ordinance adopting the annual operating budget for the city of Cape Girardeau for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, first reading. Have a motion. Moved by Robbie?
Second.
Seconded by Dan. Any discussion?
Mayor, I would just say that we've got most of staff, department heads here. I know that after we pass this budget, you guys are all going to be asked to really take a hard look and really put a lot of things on the table, and I know that's, that puts us, that puts you all in an uncomfortable spot, but I want to tell you, I think, find it very important for the future of our city and to be able to give raises to our employees and take care of our employees, thankfully, like we can this year. So, I know this is one step passing, getting this budget passed in the first reading tonight, but there's a lot of work in the future, and I want to tell you, I appreciate you being able to have an open mind about it.
Anybody else? All in favor of the ordinance? Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 1988, an ordinance establishing utility rates for the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by amending Chapter 22 relating to solid waste fees and Chapter 29 relating to water rates. First reading.
The move.
Moved by Robbie? Seconded by Stacy, sorry. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 1889, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located at 151 South Spanish Street in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from R4 to CBD. First reading. Moved by Dan. Seconded by Stacy. Any discussion?
Nothing, just played the beat. It's just been not done.
Ryan, did they, they bring this for a specific need, or was it just to come in alliance with the existing?
That property has a special use permit. Going back at the time, the last special use permit created, that might be used in the R4 district. Our current code no longer allows that, and special use permits carry a requirement that ownership of the permit cannot be transferred. The city council specifically authorized that transfer. Individually, whom the new owner bought property from had transferred, and then gets worked with the council, basically, if the special use permit impounded, no order possible. Perhaps suggested rezoning the property.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19-90, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a transportation planning consolidated grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for Southeast Metropolitan Planning Organization expenses in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ryan and, yes, and Robbie was second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19-91, an ordinance accepting four permanent utility easements from Simo Development LLC for the Highlands at Hopper Crossing in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading.
So moved.
Moved by Dan. Seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19-92, an ordinance accepting a permanent drainage easement from Terry McDowell and Cynthia McDowell for 2601 Hopper Road in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading. By Dan, seconded by Robbie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business on the agenda is appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission, and that person will be Michael McKeever.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor, make a move, motion to adjourn.
It's my job. All right. Yeah, okay. I'm not sure it needs a second. I will adjourn the meeting with your approval, and we, those of you who are going to be at the park, we'll see you there, Julia. And Mr. Porter, thank you for coming and giving our invitation.
And let's go Blues.
Yeah, let's go Blues. We need that.
Want that on the record?
Yeah.